February.
This meeting is being recorded.
Thank you. February tenth, two thousand and twenty-two, the meeting is on Zoom and is being recorded. At this point, I request anyone who was not speaking to please keep your mic muted to cut down on feedback. The record will note that all six members of the commission are present. There are currently two vacancies. I want officially welcome Marty Wood back. It's good to have Marty back. We've missed him. We've missed his expertise. Paul White Scarver is appointed a voting member for this meeting that will give us our five voting members. Also present representing the town are Juliette Hodge, the town planner, Mike Cherry, the zoning enforcement officer, Nancy Woodlock, the land use assistant, Tim Ryan, the town council liaison is excused. Before moving on, I would like to request that anyone who wants to speak identify yourself by name. And if you have not already been noted as being present, please state your address for the record. We will move into the agenda. I am just getting used to having a an auxiliary screen. So if you guys see me looking from one side to the other, I'm trying to figure out how this thing works. I think I've got it down pat. The first item we have is citizens petitions. Is there anyone present who wishes to address the commission on any item? I think I did everything.
Chairman, did you want to do the pledge of allegiance? I think there was a member that.
We have not been doing it, and I'm not in favor of doing it until we have a flag of some sort.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't. It's on the agenda, but I until we get a flag someplace, I prefer not to do. Anyway, moving on to citizen positions, is there anyone present who wishes to or wants to address the commission and any item not on the agenda? And I believe Mr. Treister is probably here to do so. So I'll recognize Mr. Treister.
Thank you. Eric Treister, Ken Huntington Way. First, I want to thank Hugh Chairman Capone and the commission for conducting a robust public hearing. Your excellent questions and your careful deliberations on the SDR application last month. Juliette and I worked together to develop what we believe was a good application. And you made it better. I am and I'm confident the SDR regulations are going to be successful. Second, as you know, proposed zoning regulations always require a public hearing and deliberations before they are accepted or in some instances denied. The accessory apartment and parking mandates in Public Act number twenty-one dash twenty-nine are for practical purposes, a proposed set of zoning regulations. The only differences are that the state is the applicant. And if you do nothing, its proposed regulations will go into effect on January first by default. I believe the state's proposed regulations should be treated the same as all proposed regulations. They should be subject to the scrutiny of a public hearing, careful deliberations, and a decision of whether they should or should not be adopted. In my opinion, the state's proposed regulations for freestanding detached accessory apartments will have unintended negative consequences. For example, using the definition of height in section two point two and applying the fifty-foot height limit in section three of the zoning regulations, the state's proposed regulations, if not denied by opting out after a public hearing, would allow a detached one hundred-foot-tall A-frame accessory apartment in rear yards by right. Obviously, that will not happen, but it would be possible. It is also possible, and I believe likely, that the state's proposed regulations will reduce property values over the long term by reducing the desirability of single-family homes in single-family neighborhoods. One of the reasons to conduct a public hearing is to provide the public with the opportunity to discuss their concerns and the potential unintended consequences of the state's proposed regulations. In summary, I urge the commission to treat the state's proposed zoning regulations for accessory apartments and parking the same as you would any proposed regulations. I urge you to take the first step by amending your agenda this evening to schedule a public hearing on the state's proposed regulations. Amending your agenda will not take much time. It is important, and it is the right thing to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Treister. Your your comments are noted. I do not believe that. Let me say, let me put it this way. I think that we would need a legal opinion to determine whether or not a public hearing is required simply because the state has passed legislation. As in your in your letter that you sent to us that we we have under correspondence, there is a procedure that the commission can follow if it wants. We can vote to opt out. That would trigger the public hearing that you want, then we would have a public hearing. That the the commission can act on that at its at its discretion.
I I respectfully disagree with you a little bit. I believe that the first step is to schedule a public hearing and then you make the decision to opt out.
But the commission gets to decide whether or not they want to.
But the commission gets to decide if they want to conduct the public hearing. I'm urging the commission to at least schedule it, same as any proposed regulation. It's allowed by the by the act. It will do no harm. And after the public hearing, you can then decide to either opt out and deny the application, to deny the proposed regulations, or to accept them. It's 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 straightforward. It's fair. I think it's it's fair to the public. And I I think it should be given considering considerable opportunity to to be debated, to be discussed. The 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 and it should be done soon because I believe that we can do better writing our own regulations to achieve the goals that the state is trying to achieve. And but but that that takes time and and we 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 need to we need to make the decision early so that we have enough time to do it right. If we decide to opt out, just just my opinion, and I appreciate you listening to it. Thank you. Thank you.
The view the view of the chair is that this item is not on the agenda. I do not see this as being an item that absolutely must be brought up at this meeting. It could be put on the agenda if we so wish at the March meeting. So unless there is an objection from the members of the commission, we will receive the comment but not act on it this evening.
Hey, Tony, Jim Mark, I understand that I'm considered just the public since I'm I'm a standby. But so just to clarify, so I understand since I'm with this, I think what you're saying is for the purposes at this time, doesn't sound like we need to consider it, but that doesn't mean no. It just means that during the course of maybe even next time, we'll we'll decide whether or not we can hear it. Is that what you're saying?
That's correct. I I don't quite agree with Eric that we can schedule the public hearing without voting on scheduling a public hearing. My reading of the of the act says that we must in order to conduct a public hearing, we must approve that with a two-thirds vote. And in this commission, that means four out of five. We can ask our land use attorney for an opinion on how we would do that, but it is not, in my view, ripe for consideration at this meeting. So, Jimmy, you're correct. And by the way, you are not a voting member, but you are allowed to comment on anything you want. The only restrictions on you, if you're not a voting member, is when we get to a discussion on something where we need a formal vote. For example, we have a hearing. Then only the the five voting members can can discuss it. You are welcome as an alternate to participate, and we encourage you to participate.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
If there was no nor further comments, we will move on. Now, let me see where I am. Go back to middle my little thing here. Okay, are there any changes or additions to the agenda? Hearing none without without objection, the agenda and all attachments and exhibits therein will be made part of the official record. Moving on to the to the rest of the agenda or the next thing on the agenda, I do not believe we have any pre-application workshops. Is that correct, Juliette?
That's correct.
All right, moving on. We have two public hearings and in line with my my philosophy that I prefer that we come to a consensus of what we're going to do and then do it. This afternoon, we received from Nancy Juliette's comments on both of the items that we will be having public hearings on. I assume that that Peter and and Mark got them as well.
I'm not sure if they did.
Okay.
Well, I can't off the website.
Okay, good. Sorry.
And.
I have not seen it. I have not seen the comments.
Juliette Juliette and Peter, I understand, have talked about these. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yes. And if if I may be permitted to explain ahead of time, the timing issue of the the public hearing and whatnot. May I do that?
Sure. And I I know what you're gonna say, but go ahead and say it.
So this application, they had a pre-application meeting with us, you remember on in January. There was some confusion, and this is all on me. I should have caught it. The if the actual official receipt date of this formal application is actually tonight. Therefore, we would have received it tonight and set the public hearing for next month. We have, however, already noticed the public hearing in error. I I'm not sure that it's an enormous deal, but I do believe that we should not act on either one of these applications tonight, giving you know, making sure we we kind of follow the timeline process. But so I have asked both applicants to present anyway. If since people may have received a notice and want to comment tonight, I think we should allow them to do that. But I would recommend that we continue this public hearing till next month, when it would have normally been scheduled so that that ledge like has a chance to respond and, you know, we all have a a longer time to look at this application. So you'll notice in my planner's comments, I had made that motion to continue, which may seem strange, but that's the reasoning behind it.
I I also notice in your I notice in your comments that for both of the applications, there are some several items you believe need to be included that are not currently included in the application. Is that correct?
The well, the one twenty-five whale head one, those are typical conditions for, you know, at the time you find my Lars for this five Lorenz, there are a couple of items that I'd like to see on the plan. Yes.
And I will. I'll leave this to to Mr. Cohen and and Mr. Gardner as to how they wish to proceed on the certainly on the one twenty-five whale head. We obviously cannot vote on this tonight. We will have to continue it to the next meeting. Would you prefer to present part of your application this evening? And then present again on March tenth, or would you prefer simply to postpone to March tenth and present it all at one time?
Well, I I'd rather present everything at one time, but I agree with Juliette that if anyone that is involved in this meeting tonight, that we can explain things, but they're both the Mark's application of one twenty-five will head is very simple, as is the one at Lorenz. But I'd rather do a complete presentation. Once I get the chance to see Juliette's comments and and the the commission can actually act on it. So I'm I have no issue with continuing this to the next month.
I would make sure we ask anybody present if they were.
That's what I'm gonna do. I was gonna ask if there's anyone present who wanted to comment on either of these applications. If there is no one here who wants to comment on either application, I I do not believe, therefore, that we have to open the public hearings and then continue them. Or do we, Juliette? It's what procedure would you prefer to follow?
You you have you do have to open it because we've noticed a public.
That's fine. That's what I was so. My intent, members of the commission, I will open the public hearing for each one. I have to do each one separately. I will immediately continue the public hearing to March tenth of two thousand and twenty-two. So that is my intent unless I hear otherwise. Okay, then what we will do here, I will now open the first public hearing. This is application PZ twenty-two dash one resub one twenty-five Whalehead Road, Gales Ferry, Connecticut owner Mark Cohen, five library lane, Gales Ferry applicant Peter Gardner, Dieter and Gardner, Gales Ferry for one lot re subdivision zone R forty-three point two zero acres. There are six exhibits which have already been incorporated into the record. Whoops, I just did something I didn't want to do. Give me a me a chance to get out of this one. What did I do? I don't know what I did.
There's there's seven exhibits on that one.
Oh, okay, we added one.
Yeah.
Okay. Oh, I say you just brought it up. Okay. Without objection, this public hearing is continued until March tenth, two thousand and twenty-two. Sound good? All right, if you would knock that one down, please. Juliette.
I'm not doing it, so.
Okay. Whoever has it all. I don't think I had it all. Maybe I did.
No, Nancy does.
Okay. You can dance. You just leave it there. I will now open public hearing. PZ twenty-two dash two resub five Lorenz Parkway M one thirty-eight B thirteen eighty L five owner Selvin Seven Lorenz LLC forty-nine forty-one Walnut Street Hartford, Connecticut applicant Peter Gardner, Dieter and Gardner Incorporated, Gales Ferry for a one lot subdivision zone CIP five point zero four acres. There are five exhibits that are that have already been incorporated into the record. Without objection, this public hearing is continued until March twelfth, March tenth, two thousand and twenty-two.
And, Mr. Chairman, I would just state that when we open the public hearing, let it be noted that all members, all voting members present would be seated for that, technically be seated for the public hearing before you continued it.
I yeah, well, that just I'm sorry, that I believe that is that goes without saying, but I will say it.
No, you should say it every time you open a public.
So we have we have finished with that item. And those two items, is there any old business?
See you all next month. Thank you.
Thanks. Yeah, I thank you, guys. Any old business? This could be a record meeting, folks. Is there any new business?
All right, where where are? Yeah, okay.
Yeah, we're we did old business. We didn't. We did new business. I think the next item on the agenda is my mouse is missing. I'll reg it on the right screener. This is going back and forth in screens is I'm still trying to figure out exactly how to do it. The next item is the the minutes from both the public hearing and regular meeting of thirteen January, two thousand and twenty-two. Are there any additions, corrections to the minutes? If not, I make a motion to approve the minutes of thirteen January, thirteen Jan- thirteen January, two thousand and twenty-two for the public hearing and regular many regular meeting. Is there a second?
I would second that.
I would second.
All right, thank you. Seconded by whichever one, Katie, whichever one Juliette got first. Call for a vote, Katie.
Yes.
Tom.
Yes.
Marty.
Yeah.
And Paul.
Yes.
And I vote yes. It passes five zero. We can knock that one down if we want here. The the next item, we have two items of correspondence. One is we have what we decreased. Oh, sorry. What we we received from Eric on the request for the PCC to initiate a public hearing pursuant to Public Act twenty-one twenty-nine regarding opting out of its parking accessory dwelling mandates. We have discussed that already under citizen petitions, and this will be taken under advisement by the commission. Second item is the notice of the seventy-fourth Annual Conference Connecticut Federation of Planning and Zoning Commission's meeting March twenty-fourth. Do 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 do. Excuse me here. I'm trying to find something. There we go. I gotta figure out how to get back and forth. March twenty-fourth. At seven o'clock at the Aquaturf in Plantville. This is something that we will find a way to cover the cost. And Juliette says this does count as continuing professional development. I plan to attend. I encourage anyone else who can do so to to do so. It's noted in here that there are length of service awards for those who have served as members of the planning and zoning commission or zoning board of appeals for at least twelve consecutive years. I know we have some people who fit that category. I do not know how many. I assume that that Mike does, that Tom may, that Eric may, that Marty may. I do not know how many, but it'd be nice if we can find out. And some of you who have much more institutional memory than I can probably help Juliette find out who those people are.
Yeah, I would like to make sure we do that.
Yeah, and so would I. And there's also the lifetime achievement awards for those who have served for at least twenty-five years in the area of land use, either as a member of a a PCC or ZBA or as a staff member. I expect Mike fits that for sure. Again, I don't know how many other people do, but we would certainly like to find out because we would like to recognize those people.
I'm a little short. I didn't start till after nine eleven.
Ah, all right. I thought you I thought you were old. Yeah, you are a little short. I thought you were back in the in like the the nineties.
I just look that way.
I know. Okay, so we may not have anybody for that one. If there are no other comments on that, we'll go now to the town planner report is going away down here. Go to the town planner report.
All righty. I'm gonna pull mine up here. Lots of houses this month, which is always a good sign of a healthy economy, which I like to see. I've still been attending the wetlands meetings because we still have no wetlands enforcement person, but the our intern Jude is making his way through the course, and Nancy and I also plan to take it, but so that we've had some some enforcement issues to deal with there anyway. Have started attending the sector EDC meetings again. Feels good to be back with that group working on the new SEDs. That's that's what we're tasked with now. As far on the grant front, we we there were some additional comments on the lots at multi-pathway trail that DOT had, so it has passed the cog, you know, the sort of the final review of the cog. It's up with DOT for funding, but they had three or four additional comments that now have to be addressed again. So we're still working our way through that process. We haven't heard from the community challenge grant yet. And that we haven't heard about the tri-town trail grant either. They requested additional information, which we submitted. So we should be hearing from that one actually relatively soon. And then I've I have I'm about ninety-nine percent through a draft of some proposed zoning regs. And I bring this up now because of something Eric said earlier. The towns can also create their own regulations for accessory dwelling units and whatever else that they want, which would go through the the public hearing process, just like any other reg amendment. And as long as those regulations are in line with that statute, you don't have to opt out. You can you show the state that you've adopted regulations that meet the the statute requirements so that you can be in compliance too. So I do have a draft of regulations that I will give you and I'm going to I won't share this screen, but I have to bear with me for a second because I've got to get to a different screen. I won't be able to see you for a second, but there I don't have it up in front of me. I've got to find you again. There you are. So I did. I did have the intern Jude, sorry, Jude, I keep calling you intern. I should call you by your name. Jude, who's sorry, who's been extremely helpful with me on this one. And we ran a just, you know, out of curiosity, we ran a report of all the the homes in town, the the single-family houses in town. Because I was curious to see how many, what the average house size was, how many houses we had, that sort of thing. So we ran a a report, I guess you could say, for just single-family houses in R twenty, R forty, or R sixty. So I didn't include the commercial, the properties in the commercial zones. And then I looked at how many were over three thousand square feet, because that's the only way you can get a one thousand square foot apartment. And so the draft of the regulations that I've created assumes thirty percent of the gross of the living area is the maximum size you can have for an apartment. And so if we look at all three zones, you find that the average house size is between thirteen hundred and nineteen hundred square feet, meaning any apartment would be under six hundred square feet. So I thought that was interesting and sort of maybe less alarming. I disagree with the hundred-foot A-frame. I don't know what that's about, but Eric, you and I can talk about that. But I've I've written these regs in a way that would sort of push the accessory apart, make it easier and probably more economical to get it above a garage, let's say. You know, because that's typically the place you find an accessory apartment is above an existing garage or in a garage or something like that or in the house. So anyway, it's something that you all can think about, and we can decide as you go along. If you want to opt out, if you want to consider the regulations that I've drafted for you, if you want to consider different regulations, but I'll send them out to everybody's and along with that report. And so you can take a peek at it. I'll send it to you, Eric, too. And we can go from there. So there was a little misinformation sent out by a former mayor that I very much disagreed with that I'd like to clarify with what I have to say. Oh, and the housing plan, I did meet with the the consultant. We've met once. We're gonna meet again. This is just sort of the meetings to figure out how we're gonna move forward, who's gonna get the data, you know, who's responsible for what. But soon I will have, and maybe I'll coordinate it with the housing forum that Mike Cherry is gonna talk about and have them introduce themselves that night. And maybe we can spend a little time just you know, going over the roadmap forward and what kind of public meetings we want to schedule. So that's underway. And I think that's I we presented our budgets. There was no issues there. And that's it. Just still working on updating everything. The town council did approve the bid waiver, so Klaus can continue his work to update all the maps, which makes me exceptionally happy. That's it. I'll turn it over to Mike.
Before you do, I I did want to welcome the intern Jude. Not realize that you were the intern. And if you could tell us a little bit about yourself?
Sure. So I'm currently a student at Yukon. I have a bachelor's in economics, and I'm getting a master's in public administration from the Department of Public Policy, which I will be receiving this May. I live in Watford, Connecticut, so very local and close. And yeah, I feel that his interest is in government and really trying to better the communities.
Glad you glad you could make it, and we certainly need the help. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
He's fantastic.
Mr. Cherry.
Thank you, thank you.
Oh, I can't hear him.
Can't hear you, Mike.
It was gonna be a short report. Now, I guess.
Yeah, I know. There we go.
Site visits pretty much are continuing with closing out old infractions, updating spreadsheets and and a lot of the blighted areas are cleared up. They're no longer blighted. They're not perfect, but it's no longer blight. A lot of roadside signs. I'm still I I just made a hook to go after the bright yellow signs. They put eight foot up the telephone pole.
Excuse me one second. Nancy, can you take my report down and put his up? Sorry, go ahead.
Thanks. Those are bothering me. The went after a couple of home contractor businesses. One was pretty upset. The other one thanked me because he wanted to retire, and he couldn't figure out how to approach it with his wife. So that helped. Five seventy-six Lantern Hill Road. We're working with Mr. Perkins and Miss Mister and Mrs. Day to try and resolve their disagreements and also allow some kind of use of the property. That's continuing. Five ninety-six Lantern Hill Road. I've looked at a couple of times. We got all the weeds cut down. The building's in pretty poor shape. But we're in winter, so what I asked him to do is make sure it's sealed to the weather and to vandals. And we'll approach that again in the spring. And that may be sold by then to somebody else who intends to remove it. So we'll see what happens. We talked a little bit about Berry Drive before. It's a two-story addition that was done without permits. That's headed to court. We'll see where it falls from there. Noteworthy in the zoning permit applications, uh, Julie had mentioned housing, housing, housing. If you look at the list, there's three of them on Abbey Drive. Uh, Abbey Road. Uh, that's bad, that was a subdivision with one home for. I want to say fifteen years. Uh, that subdivision predates my time on planning, which goes back a while. So it was good to see three homes there. Uh, what I am seeing. There's a lot of inquiries on is this lot buildable, uh? Everything from how much wetlands makes it unbuildable and can I build on a thirty-degree slope and. Does it really have to be this wide and, I mean, Juliet had one on chickens that by the time you were done, you could have a chicken.
Yeah.
But it it's interesting. With all the discussion on uh, accessory dwelling units, uh, affordable housing. Uh, and and the misinformation that's uh, starting to run around. Um, I've reached out to Saichia and um. They've agreed to provide an in, a public information session, so it's not a public hearing. An out-of-town expert has agreed to come to town and tell us what's in the housing report. What the statute says, what the real need for housing is in the regional area, because if you look close at. Twenty-one twenty-nine and you get past, you know, A D Us and other things, you'll notice that where. You used to be concerned about regional housing, now you have to do something about it. You used to be concerned about fair housing, now you have to take an active approach. To uh, institute fair housing, so those, those things are. Subtle changes in wording that could have a profound impact on the ability of the town to obtain grants in the future. Uh, I've scheduled that preliminarily for your second meeting of the month, the twenty-fourth of February. And five thirty so that uh, we can get Julie at home before it's midnight. If we.
Great.
I'm hoping to do this in person and hybrid, so those who who want to be in person can come in person. And those that want to watch hybrid can watch hybrid. That's what I have, Julie, you, you hit the nail on the head on uh. Uh, A D Us, that, that what the statute requires is that we take action. And, and as long as we meet their intent, which, you know, from the discussions we've had, I think we uh. We more than meet the intent of what they're after and it fits well in ledger for. Uh, Marty and Tom. Um, and Katie, when we did the last change in twenty eighteen, we talked about. At that time was in-law apartments, we made them accessory dwelling units, accessory apartments. And we, we struggled with detached and a lot of it had to do with cost and how do you do sewer. Uh, the change to twenty-one twenty-nine uh, helps alleviate that and opens that window up for us, so. Uh, we should uh, take some action to make sure it fits in ledger and uh. Not end up cross the breakers with. The state and housing. That's all I've got.
And I, I would add one more thing, we did have a meeting with some potential developers for the parcel next door to McDonald's down in Gales Ferry. So that's some good news too, that I forgot to mention. And um, another parcel on Route twelve, that's currently a garage that um, hopefully will be converted into a house. It's a, it is a residential district, so that will take away a non-conforming there and. Put a building that's been vacant for twenty years back on the tax rolls better, so that is good, um, and I. I've had some inquiries, um. You know, or discussions with Sal Monarcha, who's. Uh, owns the school, you know, the former Ledger Center School, and he's gonna move forward with his second phase of putting apartments. In the back of the school, so that will be coming up as well. Uh, I think that was all the meetings I had, economic development wise.
I think that Thames View one probably will end up, it's gonna have to go to Z B A uh. Right, the garage, the garage one.
Yeah, the, the garage, not, it's not the M C O, but it's on Route twelve, the garage one will, because the higher parcel is within the front setback because of the. D O T right away, right there.
Yeah. But it is interesting, uh, you know, as I mentioned, the, the. There are not a lot of building lots out there, so we're seeing the odd parcels showing up with lots of questions and some innovative looks on how to use them.
Thank you, Mike. I would encourage all members of the commission to try to attend the workshop that. Uh, that Mike is arranging. This is something we need to be uh, up on. And uh, it's, it's good that we're able to bring an outside expert to present this for us, so. Uh, we'll be sending a notice around, again, uh, obviously where it's gonna be, we hope in person, but also with an option for. For uh, hybrid, if people want to attend that way. Appreciate you setting that up, Mike.
Well, the, the, the. Target keeps moving.
Yep.
And uh, I think the last time we brought an out-of-town expert in, it was Mr. Fink from uh. Partnerships for Strong Communities and it's gotta be. That was before we combined planning and zoning, so that goes back before twenty twelve, right? So that's, it was probably ten years ago, easy.
And um, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to also sort of float out there, I'm not sure how we are gonna. Or how you want to proceed with some of the proposed reg changes. You know, I haven't really started talking about it at the public, at, at a meeting. So we may want to reserve another one of those fourth Thursdays. I'd much rather be in person to do it though, and to start going where I can present like the summary of what I'm thinking, at least start there, so.
Yeah, I agree, I, and you and I have talked about this, uh, depending on when, when you're ready to go, if you're ready to go in, in March. Uh, we could reserve the uh, the fourth Thursday in March for a workshop. For us to look at the proposed changes, we will have to have a public hearing on them, obviously. But to go over them and get them in the form that we want, uh. This is something that is, is long overdue as well, and I know Juliet has been working really hard on trying to get our regulations into. Into a form, into a structure that makes sense and getting some of our regulations that don't make sense. Into a form that makes sense, so it's a, it's something we really need to do. So whenever you're ready to roll with that, if it's by next month. Uh, we'll just set aside a workshop on the, on the fourth, uh, fourth Thursday.
Yeah, I will be, at least to give you the over, the overview.
Yeah, and that's, and that would be great. All right, is there, is there any other business to come before the commission? If not, at seven, whatever my clock says here, at seven thirty-eight, this meeting is adjourned.
This is awesome. Thank you.
Yeah, we only run long when you're still in your office.
That's, that's right. That's Juliet, go home, you go home, we'll, we'll be done quick. Thank you, everybody, for attending. I wish every meeting were a half an hour, but it's not going to be.
Thank you.
Good night, everyone. Thank you, thank you for all your, your help.
Hey, thank you very much.
Good night. Now, thank you, Marty, and glad to see you.
Thanks, good night.
Night. Thanks.
Look at Mike's picture.
I know.
Good night, guys.
I can never figure out what he has in his hand.
Oh, I've never seen it before, a phone, maybe? A play, a, a play phone, yeah, thanks.